I want to call the work session to order. We're going to move forward. We'll also open in prayer. Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we pause just to give you glory and honor. And just thank you for an opportunity to call upon your name. Lord, as we come together to make decisions for the boys and girls in the state of Alabama, let our decisions always put them in places of being heard. Lord, we ask that you will touch every heart and mind that's gathered here today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do we have a... I don't have a agenda.
They sent you a packet.
I don't have a packet.
You didn't get a folder?
I don't have something here.
It was on the...
It was... It was supposed to be...
Oh, the one that... So it was a carryover which was taken.
Is it the...
That's okay.
I guess.
It's on the board.
We're going to get it.
Siobhan.
We were...
We're sharing. We need to get a book.
We will move forward with the work session. While Dr. Mackey is being interviewed, he's asked that we would just alter the agenda just for, uh, until he arrives. And we will ask Siobhan Harris to come and make her presentation. But before she comes, let's look at item number six. We can go on because it was just for a point of reference or discussion. And that was the resolution to approve an alternative teacher preparation organization for hashtag teach. And I know last month I was one, one of the ones that had a lot of questions. And, uh, I realized it was probably due to the fact that I missed their first presentation. Uh, and then I, after going back and watching the video, uh, I also noticed that there were several board members that were absent from the first presentation, just as there were, uh, several board members, uh, that were not present last time. And so if anyone wants to have any further discussion concerning hashtag teach, we can do that now. Uh, after watching the work session of the month that I missed, I can say that they meet and exceed the requirements. And, but do we have any other discussions? Because we did have several people out last time.
Dr. Chesnut, my concern was in reference to CAC accreditation, even though I know that's not really a requirement now, but they had applied for it. So the explanation that they had given on last month was very helpful. So I'm, you know, at the point now where I can't move forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion concerning hashtag teach? If not, we'll go back and just follow the agenda as printed. We will stop for lunch at 12 o'clock. So we'll start with some of the summer learning video at this time.
Ready to go. Thank you. Just gonna work on it. Just so, while the video is coming up, so somebody may have noticed that, um, while the internet is down, that is a, almost a citywide problem. The Supercomputer Authorities had some issues, and so it's affected all the state agencies. So now, and there were problems on the AT&amp;T network too earlier, but I don't know. Some of those seem to be better. That may affect this. What do we think? No? No video?
I'd have to just dance around.
Let's try it. May not work because we're gonna have to go out, I think. Okay. Summer learning. So I'm just gonna go right into the rest of this, if that's okay.
Hundreds of messages to update.
Y'all have thought. Yeah, there's a...
How are you gonna do that?
Add it for something.
One by one.
Um, nice. Charles, and get us to the, uh, is the clicker over there? Let me get with you. We'll get it.
There we go.
There we go. Thank you very much. So, um, I'm just, y'all starting to be addicted to standing now in your work session, and I love it. So I'm gonna do this again. We, there are three items here after the video that are all very related. Talking about where our kids are for summer, reading and math camps. And so, uh, we'll certainly take all the time you want to and go through them. But even though it's three items on the agenda, I'm gonna kinda tie all of them together and ask them to put it in one PowerPoint, really. So start, first of all, we're gonna look at summer reading data. Before I unveil this, I'll tell board members, load it into your assembly this morning, and if you want a hard copy, we can print you one, is individual district and school by school data that is not available to the public because it's not been furtorized. Great, great education term. Um, a lot of our schools, you look down through there, m- most of the schools, the numbers go below 10. And so if it's below 10, we cannot release that to the public because the information can be personally identifiable. A public, for all of my media folks, a public version is being developed, but it's gonna have a lot, it's gonna look like a Pentagon document. It's gonna have a lot of stuff blacked out because anything under 10, we cannot release to the public. But the board members in your assembly, you will have all the data because obviously you're not the public.
Under 10 what, Dr. Mackey?
Under 10 people. My apologies, Dr. Reynolds. So let's say if we have, um, a school, a specifically, um, one that I want to tell you, but I've been told I can't say it publicly, but one of our very challenged schools in the Blackmail, um, had 10 kids that were, that performed under, um, the, below grade level reading in the spring. All 10 of them went to summer reading camp. And all 10 tested at the end of summer reading camp. Six of the 10 at the end of summer camp were tested on grade level to move on, four didn't. So you have that data for every school in the state. But because it's, if it's 10 students or fewer, then we cannot identify that school. So what, what the public will see is just, they won't see 10, 6, 4. They will see asterisk, 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 or something like that. They, it may seem 10, 10 tested, but there will be asterisks beyond that. And unfortunately, unless you're in a really big elementary school, they, um, they're all like that. And even in many of our bigger school districts that have, you know, huge schools, if they're in a really high performing district, they may still have that because they had such few, such small numbers. So it's gonna be really hard for the public to interpret. But board members, again, you can, you can have it. I just mentioned that to you because if people ask you for it, just if you'll tell them, there's a public, it'll be posted on the website, there's a public version being developed, but it's not, um, they've not been able to go through that line by line to, to fix it.
How did you load it on assembly without the computer system working?
Well, it was loaded before the computer, it was loaded before it went down. So, so it should be in there. You may not can see it now.
The computer does work?
I had some issues this morning, um, with assembly even outside of the network, but that appears to be working well because I was able to follow it. But I'm using the 5G network, not the Wi-Fi.
I'd like a written copy, please.
Written copy? Yeah, we can get you a written copy.
I don't know if I'm gonna work when I get home. I don't know what to trust you on that one.
You know, I...
The system, the technology is not understanding. Something I want to rely on.
Well, we'll get you a written copy.
You gave me nothing.
We can, uh, that's not a problem to get you a copy. And I know you want one. And we can get a copy for everybody. It's not a big deal. We probably, probably can get them copied today. Though I gotta make sure because before I came down here, we couldn't use the printers either because they are on the network and we couldn't access them. So you may not have it today, but you'll get it. Okay, let's look at state level data then. So again, you're gonna see this chart for every school in the state and broken down by school district and by board district. So if a school district is bifurcated like Montgomery County, then you'll see, uh, Ms. Bell will see the ones in her district, Dr. Chesnut will see the ones in her district. So we had 53,492 students tested in the spring. Of that, number tested on or above grade level, 48,684. This is all data we looked at in June, I know. Below grade level, 48,08, which was 9%. Okay, total. So then, um, we have retested the summer supplemental test. We had 3,003 tested. The number who tested on or above grade level of that 3,003, 1,337. Below grade level, 16,66. So when you add the two together, we tested, we have, um, number who scored on or above grade level, 50,021. Number below, 34,71. So the percentage went from 9% below grade level to 6.5%. Now, there's, this is, before somebody asks, let me address this. So we did not test in summer school, everybody who tested below grade level in the spring. There could be a number of reasons for that. Um, we are digging into that line by line, school by school. Some of our schools, one I just mentioned, every child that tested below grade level went to summer reading camp, every child was tested again. But we have school districts that, that tested very few of their students. Now, we are sending our regional people to find out exactly what happened. But realize there's a couple of things that happen in there. So one is, um, they, those students might have severe special needs, and so they dealt with it another way. They might have had a reading portfolio and they dealt with it that way. Um, they might have just had a conference with the parents, said, "Your child is not ready to move on," and just didn't, so the child, that, so they didn't go to summer camp. Um, so there are a lot of reasons why this number is different, but we have charged our ARI folks, our regional folks, would find out where pretty much every one of those, um, almost 1,800 kids, what happened. No matter where they fall, whether they were promoted on another good cause exemption or they're staying in third grade or whatever, they are all have reading plans because they have been identified. So they need special support for reading. So we, again, our regional folks, that's why we have them to make sure that those reading plans are in place and being followed. So that's really the first presentation. I can stop anytime, but I think it'll make more sense if you let me kinda go through this next part and then just come back. Summer, so, so when we look at our summer intervention plans for reading, now what I just showed you, these are third grade data only, right? Third grader. But when we think about summer reading, it of course applies to all grades, K through 3 for reading, K through 5 for math. So these are the students who were identified to have a summer intervention plan for reading and math. So we had 8,090 kindergarteners for reading and 3,450 for math. You'll see that these numbers, again, first and second grader kind of ballooned. Lots of first and second graders that were identified for extra support, that they need a reading plan to work on for the summer. There's no reading plans for fourth and fifth graders, but there is for math. And that's the way, that's the difference in the way the Literacy Act and the Numeracy Act are written, um, is that these reading pla... That does not mean that there are no fourth grade reading plans because there will be specialized reading plans for students who move on to fourth grade but were identified with reading deficiencies. But they, but, but this, following this summer reading plan, these are the ones that were identified, the numbers. Reading retentions. So when we look at this, by the way, I should, I've been asked to point out a thousand times, all of this number is preliminary. You say preliminary because the final reports don't come in from the districts till September 16th. They're gonna be pretty close. I'm not gonna expect big shifts, but there'll be some, some changes. Part of that's because they, you know, they'll be having like IP meetings and other meetings with parents even as school begins. So by September 16th, we, they have to have final reports into this, but they're gonna be pretty close. Number of students retained based on their reading, kindergarten, 3,448. First grade, we think it'll be 3,700, second grade, 2,100, and third grade, 1,800. I just, I wanted this chart, I asked our staff, I think they were worried about me sharing it, but I wanted it because I wanted to remind you what I have said earlier in the spring, that what we're seeing now is that school systems appear to be working, as I think a good principal should, working with parents and retaining students younger rather than waiting till they get to third grade. And that's gonna affect our third grade numbers for the years going forward, right? Because if the students retained in first grade or second grade, there's a special provision in there about multiple retentions. So we're gonna, we're gonna see, I think, more and more schools focusing on getting students ready earlier, which I think is a good thing because the, the later students are retained, the worse the social outcome. So that's, there's been lots of research on that. And that's why a third grade's not considered the beginning, it's kinda the last effort. If you're not retained by the end of third grade, then there are a lot of reasons not to retain kids in fourth, fifth, sixth grade and beyond, um, because it rarely ever does the, the benefit of a second year in that grade outweigh the loss that they get both socially and academically. So anyway, this is why the trend that we're seeing, these are self-reported data. So the districts tell us, remember, we can see their testing data. I go back. This we can see because we control the test. But as far as who's actually retained or who has a summer plan, the districts have to tell us that. Students can be retained for reasons other than a reading score too, remember. We've always had students who were retained. This is not new. It's just a new law laid on top of what they've always done. But this is what they have reported to us, they expect retentions to look like. Again, these numbers could change some by September 16th. I would not expect them to change dramatically. Also, this could change by September 16th when they had to have their finals in, but these are what we say, well, students, um, I'm gonna show them the right one, I think. According to release, previous member of districts are not required to submit their information until September 16th, blah, blah, blah. Okay. What, what was the good cause if they were promoted on a good cause exemption? Okay. About 59 students, um, so far because of the ACAP alternate test. Remember, that's the 1% of students who have the, the most severe cognitive disabilities. So those students got promoted, um, even if they scored below the reading cut score. That does not surprise any of us. Uh, the second, EL. So their English language proficiency was low and they have been promoted on a good cause exemption. There is a provision, um, in the, that, that students, if they are, um, if they're reading, they're, they have the reading ability, but they don't have the English ability. They can move on to fourth grade, but they have to continue to be supported with an English learner language plan. Okay? So 149. IEP or 504, an intensive intervention and retention. So 431 kids were essentially promoted because of an IEP team decision. Again, that's perfectly reasonable to expect, but we do expect that those students, then they are, we know that they're in a special education program and they should have intensive, um, reading supports beyond a regular classroom, in the special ed classroom as well. Uh, previously retained are intensive intervention. So there is a, we don't want, you know, we don't want 12-year-olds in second grade. No, everybody knows that. Those were all the horror stories. We don't have all these big kids with beards in third grade. Well, we're not gonna do that. Obviously, we, there's a lot that goes into these decisions. And, but 41 students had had previous retention and the team felt like they needed to move on to fourth grade, but again, with continued reading support, um, but they were moved on. I know people like to say that's, that's social promotion, but I wanna emphasize that's a very small number of people statewide. And when we identify the part, half the battle, you know, they say half the battle's in knowing. We've identified those 41 students need to move on, but they need strong reading supports in fourth grade. So just identifying them, I think, is, is also very important. 124 on portfolio. I know Ms. Ziegler was very involved in her work representing y'all on the reading, on the, uh, literacy task force to make sure we had their portfolio assessment to a place we felt comfortable with, so we had 124. That number could change some. Again, self-reported, they've got till September 30th. I, I think that we may end up seeing that there are a few more students who are promoted based on a portfolio because some of them will go back and evaluate the students that did not pass the summer reading exam and then look at the portfolio. They were waiting to look. But we'll see. And then supplemental, I am not sure what that is.
Supplemental assessment.
That's the supplemental assessment. Okay. So 116. That number will also go up. We know for sure because I just showed you the supplemental numbers were here. So this is the number 1,660, uh, 1,333 scored as, as grade level in the, on the supplemental assessment. So even though the districts right now are only reporting 116, that just means they haven't filled out the portal. So see what I mean by these are self-reported data? They'll go up, those, that number will go up over time. Um, part of that, part of this is to let you know, we're collecting it, you know, we're, we're following every child. Summer readings, uh, the summer and reading after school program. So these are just some, um, uh, some, this is a, these are extra programs. You remember that there was, the ASAP program was started with just very, very, very little. That was started my first summer as superintendent. We had the kickoff at Fitzpatrick Elementary School here in Montgomery County for the very first one. But the grants, these are specialized grants. Um, that's very, been a very small program. It's not our summer reading program, but it's supplemental to it. They have been previously issued to the Department of Early Childhood Education. The legislature gave us those grants last year and we have them again this coming year. That's why we've hired, remember, Jeffrey Norris, to manage all of our summer and after school programs. So these are now our programs. Um, we had grants in over 50 locations. Approximately 40 of these grants were in our schools, but they can be in community organizations too. So like it could be a summer live program, that sort of thing. So these are just some spotlights and, uh, just, they're not all of them. I know by the end of the meeting, I will have emails from sleepers in minutes. Jasper City, uh, had a great summer camp. They included, these are some extra things they had. They had guest speakers coming in, extra reading materials. They included a Spanish enrichment, uh, for their fourth through sixth grade students. So again, not just 3, K through 3, um, but they really did an amazing job. Gadsden City did an amazing job also, and they have been here as one of our leaders for summer reading. Um, they took field trips out to the Honda plant, to the zoo, and so several things going on there. Blount County had a national recognition. So their summer learning programs will be featured in, um, a special summer learning network publication, and there's gonna be a film, you know, on location in Blount County for the great work they've done. And Tuscaloosa City Schools also got national recognition, and they're gonna be featured in the Rethinking Summer Learning episode in the Wallace Foundation's A Hot Time for Summer Learning podcast. So got national recognition for those two programs. Um, one of our schools that's on our turnaround list, uh, or two of them, ABC Elementary and Hobbs and Wilcox County, very proud of the work going on in those schools. But look, they, you remember last year, we, uh, we talked about bringing the arts into our 15 turnaround schools, the intensive schools? Well, they, in addition to the work on reading and math, they've done music classes, well, music education, all we old students participate in choir, piano, guitar and drums at least twice a week. So we're very proud of that, thinking about other ways. You see them up there doing music class. Chisholm and Highland Gardens, two of our other, um, turnaround schools here in Montgomery County, they had theater classes, uh, they had special learn, they went to the Learning Center for the Arts, which is downtown here, and also focused on literacy standards and instruction through theater and hands-on activities. Just some really neat things as our folks are thinking about what I keep saying, it's not summer school. So we don't want kids and parents to think they're just going to school in the summer. It's gonna be more enriching, more engaging than the, the regular school year. I did, regular school year's not engaging, but we can't do all these, all these things all year long. And then, um, I think this is my last one. Chastain Fournier, I never say it right.
That's right.
Ms. Ziegler, um, did murals. So you see these murals that the students painted as part of their summer camp. And there's actually a video, but I gotta go back over there to get the, uh, thing and show you the video real quick, I think. Uh-oh, Charles, did you take the video thing? Maybe he has it. Or maybe I took it and then...
Here it is. Remind you.
Oh.
It's the camera.
Okay.
Media clicker.
Okay, let me see. This should do it.
I was trying to stretch it.
Should be able to do it touchscreen, I think. No. Hmm. I think if I do this, it's just gonna go wrong. Okay. Well, we'll try to come back to the video. I don't know if there was a... Oh, he's got it there.
Which one's the video?
Right here.
Chastain.
Right there? No?
I'll go back.
All right. Where it says video. Wait a minute, I'll go back. Right here.
Oh. Oh, sorry. The mouse is weird.
Texas. There we go.
Okay.
Good deal.
Here, I'll keep the mouse scrolling to you. I think that's the last video, though.
Maybe it's...
I didn't really get to experience art till college, and I'm just happy to be able to bring that experience to the students early on because, uh, it, it's just a fun way to communicate, really. The way I always think about it is, you know, it's just another form of language. So that's how I teach it too, is teaching them how the shapes act as letters in a word or how the colors act as your accent, how you pronounce things. Throughout the weeks, we worked on, uh, what they would wanna see on the walls of their cafeteria. Uh, specifically for this one, this is the pizza wall. So we had to sketch out what their perfect pizza slice looks like. Uh, and we used that as inspiration to add what toppings we were gonna do. Uh, and mostly the process of doing this is I would take some chalk and I would kinda sketch a shape out for them. Uh, then I'd just give the students paint and let them go at it, really.
I feel that...
Does that work? Come on, come on. It's fair. It's kind of... Guys, go fast.
Okay, I guess we'll, we'll, we might, Charles, we might, that might be all we get. But that's the idea. Again, trying to do, um, these programs are offered to students not just in K through 3s, not just based on literacy and math. They're infused as a part of it, but we also are doing, um, middle school programs and, and very excited about that work. I think that, you know, this shows you kind of what our, our creative folks in the field are doing to try to make sure that we do enriching stuff in the summer. We have more requests for the money, by the way, than there is. This is like a $2 million grant program from the legislature, but I think that, um, as we see success, it'll, it'll probably grow.
Are the legislators seeing this so they understand that we need more money because there'll be more schools? Because this is what they need to see.
They will be seeing it, but we give it to you first.
I know.
So the board first. But yeah, we're gonna share this with legislators and help them understand that, um, that piece. I'm not even thinking about how to, kinda work. Love to work this into my budget presentation in the spring, but you know, I only get like 30 minutes. There's a lot to do, but they need to see the very unique, different things that we're doing.
Bingo.
Yeah. So struggling readers beyond third grade, let me just go through this one and then come back. So you know we got $5 million in the budget. We have placed that in the Alabama Reading Initiative. Again, we'll be working through our instructional services team, Mr. Stevens back there. It's not just ARI because this is fourth grade and beyond. It's lots of people working together, but we had to figure out where we're gonna place this. So we're gonna hire another person, a specialist who's going to be, um, know that this is not their salary, but we projected out with salary and benefits, traveling and everything, we'll spend about $150,000 off the top to hire somebody to really focus on 4 through 6, supporting our districts. It's not, with only $5 million, this is the... It's not, with only five million dollars, this is the proposed budget. One is the universal assessments, we have money for an early childhood screener. When we talk about budget, which I know is not today, we're going to have to talk about that number because it's been set at six dollars per student for a long, long time, costs are going up. But that is not available for fourth, fifth, and sixth graders in reading. Remember, math, the university app is a little different, so we need to purchase those screeners for, for some of our schools. The, a grant opportunity focused on the schools with the largest number of students who are identified with reading issues going into fourth grade. And then a grant opportunity for summer learning and tutoring for fourth and fifth graders. So a good bit of the money, we think, we will focus on summer, next summer for fourth and fifth graders. Because we don't have summer reading camps for fourth and fifth graders. Grant opportunities for districts for, for peer coaching, and then also professional development for our teachers. And we don't have a number there, but we're going to, we're going to work professional development in for all the teachers. But focusing on the schools that have the most, the largest number of fourth graders who were identified as being either below grade level and were promoted, or, you know, more than just that. We need to look at those students that are just above grade level too. So, so we're looking at the schools with the most struggling fourth graders. We will, I know we're going to talk about the budget at the retreat, and then in the September work session. But we're going to come back, obviously, and ask for, ask you to ask for more money for that. We will grade this with our other funds, our other summer reading funds, our ARI funds, so that we can support these fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teachers. And I said something last month that, I must have not said it right, because it confused a lot of people that were watching online. So the budget stipulates that the reading coach money, so the money to buy, the money to pay reading coaches has to be focused in K three. But we get money beyond that to support ARI, and that money is not limited to only K three. So we will, so, so our reading specialist at the State Department, our regional folks, they can support beyond grade three. But it's got to be limited because there's just not enough of them to do a lot of that. But our reading coaches in the schools, the language specifically says they're work only with, with teachers in grades K three. And it got, I think, whatever I said, it probably get misinterpreted this time too. But if there are questions, we will, we'll work on them. But we're, we're not going to leave our fourth grade teachers hanging out to dry, is the end of that. But, but the local reading coach cannot necessarily go work with the fourth grade teachers, but we've got other resources to try to do that.
Would you mind going back one please? So the educational specialist, so you're saying that one individual right now, right now, will have to ask for more money? But they will go in to assist with only four, five, and six?
That's right. Yeah, we're going to hire eight persons, so we have, that just will work on four, five, and six interventions. And then we hired Mr. Norris.
Right.
To work on all the summer, summer school and, I shouldn't say summer, summer programming and after school programming. So they will work closely together on how we build out this, this piece for fourth and fifth grade summer reading camps next year.
But the other one would, will there be a prioritized list because there's, or will they hit all the ones?
No, they're going to have to do a prioritized list.
The ones with the greatest numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, there's just no way, if we get.
Because if we do that, we dilute it.
That's exactly right. We, we get a call from a principal that's not on the prioritized list, that says, I really need some help with, you know, coming up with some ideas for my fourth grade teachers, we are not going to leave them out. Either through this person, or other ARI folks, or Mr. Stevens team, we're going to find somebody to help that principal. But we're going to prioritize those schools that have the most, the most struggling readers in fourth grade.
And Dr. Mackey, with professional development then, will be based upon the work that's done?
Yes.
Forthcoming, and that's why there's not a figure there?
That's exactly right, yes, ma'am. And, oh, Ms. Short's got, she's got more to add to that, and I'd love for her to answer. Yes?
One of the things that we already have started doing is offering professional learning for teachers pre-K through twelfth grade and higher ed. So we have Nye House Professional Learning Modules that was highlighted in Dr. Mackey's Midweek Matters. And we are offering to all of those teachers, there's eighteen different modules, they can do them in any order. And they address various topics on the science of reading. It aligns beautifully with, with Letters Professional Learning. And so that's one of the ways we're already supporting with that professional learning. So right now, additional money is not needed for professional learning, we want to dive in what we've already invested in. The other professional learning will be that peer coaching.
Based upon, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for short. She and her team, by the way, they got to go on the most, the greatest trip, they were so excited when they came back. Got to go to the Big Sky Reading Conference, and I'm glad they could do that. So, and that's where, I know some of you, at least individually, I talked about, it's not just going to be the five million. We're going to do more for these middle grade teachers, but that's what she's talking about. That's how we're integrating the ARI resources, so that we, we, you know, strengthen our base and make sure that everybody has support. We don't want any principal or teacher to feel like they are drowning out there. The same way with our EL supports, we, the money from the state, there's a, there's a formula that the legislature gives us to, so that more money goes to the districts that have the most EL students. But if you have one child who shows up in your classroom, and they the only child in school, and they don't speak English, you need support. And we're going to make sure we support that, that teacher, we're not going to leave them without support, even though they won't show up on the priority list. Yes, ma'am?
I now have a question for Ms. Short. Based on the, us providing that professional learning kindergarten and beyond, are we tracking who's using that professional learning in a way that gives us sort of an accountability measure for these prioritized areas? I mean, are, it's great to offer, are they taking advantage of it, and how do we know that?
Everybody that registers for the training is registering through us first, and they send that information to Nye House. We are collecting that information similarly to how we currently collect Letters information. So that we can know where they come from, what grades they're currently supporting, things of that nature. And then that will be uploaded into Power School, our professional learning information hub.
Perfect, thank you.
Is there a plan for a particular school system or school that may not opt to ask for the support? Do we have something in place so that if the data says that they need the support, what is the plan to ensure that every child has a teacher that can provide them with the necessary skill sets to be successful?
So we're starting first with looking at those students that we know currently have student reading improvement planning. As a third grader, and they would be moving up to fourth grader to make sure that those students are supported, working on some structures to guide our, our districts, LEAs, principals. And so we'll be able to provide that information to them. But then similarly to how we're working with K three, we'll be able to get insight into what's, what's going on in fourth grade.
And if we get a, I know Dr. Shields has something I want her to say too, but I, I'll tell you this. We, if we get a principal or a superintendent who doesn't want, they, that, who, we know, we can look at the data and see their school needs help, and they say they don't want help, they will be receiving help, we'll take it. That'll happen.
That should not be an option.
We'll follow those people one at a time. Our team knows, well, how we handle that first, go through our regional folks, and let our regional folks work with the principal. And if they hit stone walls, they get elevated to Mr. Markham or Ms. Markham, they try to work through it. And if they hit stone walls, those walls get broken down quickly. We've had to do some of that, but we don't, we do it quietly, but we're going to, yeah. Unfortunately, sometimes we have people who think they don't need help, and they do. And that's not going to be their choice, as long as they're overseeing a school that has children that need services. Dr. Shields?
Well, you said, Dr. Mackey, pretty much I was going to say.
Well, you say it again, you'll say it more clearly than I.
Well, no, 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 and so we work in regional teams across the state, and certainly was our, with ARI, with OMI, with MTSS coaches, OSI. We look at the data regionally to figure out, are there some underserved areas that have not seen us? That, to answer the question, they may not have asked for support, and so we're going to make sure that we give them that. And so we will come in as a team to do that. The other piece I just wanted to recognize, and Bonnie touched on that too. So this is the first time that we've got these students that are moving to fourth grade that needs a course, right? And they had a student reading intervention plan. So what we're doing is going to provide universal professional learning on that, that, that student reading plan moving with that student to fourth grade, so that fourth grade teachers know how to maintain that plan. It may look a little different than it did for first through third, but we feel like it's really important that we empower those fourth grade teachers to use that student reading plan. We're even having discussions, like, isn't that a good practice? That these student reading plans could follow students that are making informed decisions wherever they are on that continuum of literacy. So that's something we plan to do for the entire state, is to provide on-demand and synchronous professional learning on what does it look like for these third grade students to read in the fourth grade and beyond. And then we also have field folks that are dedicated for four, twelve literacy that have done an astronomical job, who have been working very, very closely with Bonnie's team to make sure we're providing consistent language in the support of literacy for grades four and above.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes, I'm sorry, just an added piece to that, just to show the coordination of the work that's going on within the instructional section. Shabon's team is working to build out those renewal requirements. And this professional development that's specific to what they're teaching by grade level is really coordinated in the proposal that she will be presenting with us. So the communication that's taking place from certification to instructional support, professional learning with Talina Madison, all of that is coordinated to make certain, as we're looking at data, we're making certain we put processes in place to support teachers. So that is going to be a big key with the new renewal requirements connected to what you're teaching.
Is when you're talking about certification renewal?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a significant difference in the number of third graders retained this year in comparison to previous years?
I'll have that up here, I have to look that up for you, I, I don't know for sure. So that when we look at retention, and this is reading retention specifically, but I don't know if that number's going up or down. That's a good, very good question, I'd be afraid to answer it off the cuff. We looked at that, some early, early preliminary data, and it looked like it had gone up some. But I, I don't, we'll get you that data, it's a good question. We, it is, one of the things that I worry about, I know board members worry about, because you all share it with me, is that there is, you know, with, with seven hundred fifty thousand kids and, you know, pre-K through twelfth grade, dual enrollment, all the things going on, and, and fifty-something thousand teachers, there are probably, there's probably always an educator out there, a principal or a teacher, who is lost and doesn't know where to go, or doesn't want to admit they're lost. And so we actively are looking for those folks through, as Dr. Shields said, not just ARI, but then our math improvement office, through AMSTI, through the MTSS work, our officer's school improvement. We're trying to identify who are those folks that need help, that might be afraid to ask for help, or might not know whom to ask, and to get them the help they need. And so that's why all these groups have to coordinate together. And so I feel really good about it, but, you know, we, we still hear, as you do occasionally, you know, a teacher that says they didn't know they could get this or could get that. And so, you know, the first question to your mind is, how could they not know? But it doesn't change the fact they say they don't know, so we got to get them the read, get them the support they need. And as we push more of our work into middle grades, that's going to be more and more and more important. Because I think fourth grade teachers get it, but I think the, the higher the grade you teach, in my personal experience, I have no scientific evidence to back this up, but that teachers more and more expect that they should not be having to teach reading, that they're teaching content, and the students should be able to read the content. But as I've said before, being able to read, you know, be able to read a basic nonfiction book, and being able to read a chemistry textbook are two very different things. A person may be really good at reading a novel and not be, and be completely lost when you put them in a content book. And so it's a, it's a continuum of supporting teachers.
Dr. Mackey, I can sort of visualize how you identify those teachers, but it's certainly with fifty thousand, and then you near it down to the grades where you're looking for them. How are you finding them? What type of criteria?
Sure.
Or even criteria, I mean, how do you just target those teachers, other than, I guess, student?
Student, I obviously look at it as student data, then, and really working first with principals, trying to identify those, make sure that every principal, we look at their data, and we look at what supports they have, and what they're asking for, does all that match up? With the new principal law that y'all been working on, and the legislature's given bonuses of up to, up to fifteen thousand dollars for principals based on their being engaged in intensive professional development, that will help us because all the principals will have to be going through that, we'll, we'll see that. But then when you get to the level of teachers, it's much more difficult. Now, as we get regional people in and out of schools, they are able to, to identify sometimes, but, you know, obviously, we have a limited number of people at the state, and so we really are reliant upon the districts to do their part, and individuals out there who feel like they need more help to reach out, to reach out to get that help too. So appreciate what board members do, y'all send us people sometimes that have reached out to you and wants some extra support. And it's good to do that. I, related to this, let me give you a, kind of a synopsis of where I think we should, should go. Take, it's my recommendation anyway, so take the data, the school level data too, that you'll want to digest, and look at your schools. You'll have some questions about some of it, and that'll be fine, we'll, but, I know we have the retreat in a couple of weeks. And one of the retreat agenda items that we've been asked to, to talk about is the cut score for third grade reading. So I, you know, and I'd ask you, and you all very gracious and agreed, back in June, we don't need to discuss that yet. Let's wait and get our summer reading data in, let's get in all of our data. But I think by then, we can have a pretty good discussion about that. Then to put it on the work session agenda for September, to have another discussion in this, you know, very public forum about the cut scores. And then, and then to talk about if we want to change the cut score in October. I think there's no, well, there may be some question, there seems to be some growing consensus that over time, we want to move from the minus two to the minus one. I've got a lot of my testing folks in the room here. There doesn't seem to be any question, among all the people I've talked to, and they've been dozen, about the, the score we are, from which we do the minus one, minus two, which is four seventy-three or something. But the key is, do we want this retention number to be, to stay at the minus two, or minus one, or something in between? Several people have mentioned to me, is there a way to go between minus two and minus one? Yes, there is, so there's, that can be set by the board. So I think let's have a discussion about it at the retreat, and again, in the September work session. And then I feel like we'll, there'll be some consensus, I don't mean everybody will agree, but whether you want to leave it at minus two another year, I don't think we want to leave it there forever, whether you want to move to minus one, or you want to do something in between. But I think October could be pushed to November, but no later than November, and I prefer in October to set it because remember, that's this, that's the school year we're already in. So our teachers and principals need to know what the target's going to be, whatever it is. We can't wait till the spring certainly to set it. Now, that's not going to change the fact, yes, sir?
Do you envision a reason that we cannot do it in October, if that's our goal?
I don't see that, no, but just to.
We set our goal in what is best for the school system?
Yeah, my goal would be that we would do something in October, so that's.
You entertain the possibility of delaying it, I don't know what the rationale for doing that, to me, we have this work to do.
I don't know either, Dr. else, but I've proposed timeline. Well, I don't know either, Dr. Els, but I've proposed timelines before that got delayed. Board members have more questions, more questions that need to be answered. But I think, I think all the data will be out there that we could do that in October. I don't wanna do it in September, and I'll tell you why. Because, one, I feel like we, you know, it's always been my thought, and the board, I think, agrees, that we don't wanna just discuss something in a retreat and then vote on it two weeks later, that we need to have it, actually take it through a formal work session. So that's why I think if we can, we can have the discussion, because y'all have asked to have it at the retreat, then continue it at the work session and then... But we would hopefully come to the work session with either a recommendation or like two recommendations for you to discuss. So we're not talking about everything, but we're like, kinda narrowed down. It's this or this that we'll be voting on in October. And then by the end of the work session to have that, to have that set. And then, of course, you know, it can be changed every year. We don't wanna be in a situation, I don't think, where it does change every year because what it does is it doesn't give us consistency in being able to compare. We already will, you know, if we change it for next year, which I'm not opposed to, but then we'll have to remind people if the number jumps and it goes from 9% to 12% or something, well... But it's, it's not that the kids are reading any worse, it's that we're looking at a different score. So we, we're always in the market of trying to explain to the public extremely difficult statistical measures in two minutes or less, which is when we lose them. But that would be my suggestion for that. So, other questions?
You said the budget is September and, and cut scores October, October. Yeah, so that's a...
So the budget would also be...
At the retreat and September.
At the retreat and the September work session.
Cut scores is retreat and possibly October.
Yes.
September and October.
Yeah. So both of them would be, but both of them would be on the vote for the October meeting. Vote the foundation program request because it has to be to the executive budget office by November 1st. So what I would suggest is we also discuss it. You'll get some things ahead of time, but kinda we'll look at it like we have in the past. You know, this is what we asked for last year, this is what we got, what do we wanna think about for next year? So we kinda, we've kind of, you know, go through the thought process at the retreat. And then when we come back at the work session in September, I'll have your spreadsheet to hand you and say, based on the things you were talking about, we think we've captured your discussion and put it in numbers. And then we'll go through those, I would predict maybe even line by line, and say, do you agree, you know, do you wanna adjust some of these up or down? And then in October, we'd vote on the budget request for FY '26. Six, FY '26.
Dr. Mackey, because we know that there is a group of people organized who are looking on behalf of the legislature at the foundation program. It's very structured in funding schools. Do we expect that to impact our discussion on this next budget cycle and in what way?
Very good question. So the short answer is no. I would not expect it to impact the '26 budget at all. There is ongoing discussion about whether to rewrite the current foundation program or to amend it. Now, there's, there seem to be multiple ideas out there. Some are to start from the scratch and rewrite the whole thing, and some of them are to amend it as it is now. Then have been brought into a lot of conversations about that most recently. And there is a public hearing meeting of the legislative, kind of their commission, the joint legislative committees, next week, August 15th, to discuss that. But even if they pass something in the spring '25 session, I would think they could not implement it till FY '28, '29, or beyond. Because they would have to pass it if, you know, if it's, I mean, I can't predict what the legislature's wanting to do, but as I've said this before, if it's anything related to, the last two studies they did that were conducted have been anywhere between tax increases of 1.5 to $2 billion. And that most recent one was a $2 billion increase, and that was over 10 years ago. So you'd be talking about raising revenue somewhere, that, I mean, there are only two options. You either raise revenue or you shift revenue from the wealthier districts to the poorer districts. There's, or you raise things as they are.
It'll obviously reach subject to intense or local judicial reviews.
Could be, yes.
Absolutely.
So, you know, in Alabama, we're still under the Lee Bein-Macon court order, which was, which did come into play in the '95 order because, you know, I don't, I mean, it's, it's gonna be very complicated, we, you know, to, to, to what the weights could look like. And I've looked at, I spent plenty of hours on it, so I know it can be done, but it is gonna be very complicated. Does not mean, and I use the T-word, nobody wants to hear, does not mean that taxes would have to be raised. They could raise revenue in other ways. We all know gambling's been on the table every legislative session and forever, and that could be a way that revenue's raised. But, but you either raise revenue or you shift revenue that you currently have from one part of the state to another part of the state. If you, if the system were, because this is the third thing that people have mentioned to me, is to completely rewrite the system but guarantee that, that there's no changes in revenue for anybody. Well, I don't know why we would. If there's no change for anybody, I'm not sure why we'd go through the process. So it could be done, that'd be a simple...
Well, it's not, it's not new, as you know, probably. You were starting out in the classroom, but in 1993, this whole discussion even went to the courts. And so it's, it's not a new issue. And much of what they're discussing now is based on what they discussed before and then before that. And so it's, every time it has been a little different, but it goes back to really...
I have, I have been reading the minutes of the '87, '88 commission that Dr. T put together. Very interesting reading. I was in high school.
Yes.
So...
Well, I didn't want to make that kind of...
It's true, it's true.
But I was a reporter back in seven, in the seventies and so, yes, I remember a lot of that.
Yeah, and that, so a lot of it goes back even to that commission report back in the seventies. So, so I think it's gonna be, back to, I made it too long probably, back to Ms. West's question. I don't think any of that would affect our '26 request and probably not even the '27 request. Even if they passed it in the '26 session, it would probably be '28 before any of it was affected.
And it could go to the courts. There's a lot that goes along with that whole picture, so...
That's true. It's gonna be a good discussion, I think. I've had very healthy discussions with both the budget chairs and the executive budget office. And so it's good, it's always good to talk about what are the issues and we, and where are we underfunded? And what are the things that need to be done? But as far as if being done by next year, I don't think that would...
Do we have any additional questions or comments about the first four items? We'll move on to the administrative code pertaining to alternative teacher preparation organization. I think it's theirs.
Yes. So, come on up. You go ahead. I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna sit down for a minute and let you handle this.
Good morning. We currently have two options for alternative preparation organizations to apply as a provider. This past legislative session, the, there was another option added and passed to the legislation. So this will provide a third option for those preparation organizations to be approved. The third option that they provide is that the organization be a member of AQUEP, which is the Association for Advanced Quality and Educated Preparation. And if they're already a member of AQUEP, they have to apply for CAPE approval by April the 1st. And they have to attain CAPE approval by October 1st, 2026. So no longer will we just look at, well, the, the rule says no longer will we just look at CAPE accreditation, but if the, if the program is accredited by AQUEP and they have applied for CAPE approval by April the 1st of 2024, then they can apply to be a provider in the state. So I know that's a little confusing.
Does that just throw the door open for any company to set up shop in Alabama?
They have to have, they all have to already be approved by AQUEP, which is the other accreditation provider for educated preparation. But they have to have applied for CAPE accreditation by April the 1st of 2024. So let's say there's an organization that is AQUEP accredited. If they had not already applied for CAPE, then they could not come in at this time and say, hey, I wanna apply for CAPE and use this option.
What happens if they don't meet the criteria October 1, 2026?
If they're approved, then I assume what we would do is, as we've done with the other resolutions, is to put a sunset date on it. So if, if we bring in an organization who meets this criteria, then the resolution will also include language to say, if you don't have your full CAPE accreditation by October 1st, 2026, then they will no longer be able to provide those services to our teachers.
I think I'm a little confused on the AQUEP.
Okay.
I thought that this was a, you said a member of that organization, and then you said it is an accreditation.
Right. So there are two accreditation, you know, major accreditation organizations for educated preparation. You have CAPE and then you have AQUEP. And so Alabama has chosen for our institutions to go with CAPE. So there are some of the alternative preparation providers who are accredited by the other organization, AQUEP. So if they are accredited by AQUEP, then they're, but they apply for CAPE accreditation. Before April 1st of 2024, then they're saying that they should be allowed to apply to be a provider in Alabama as long as they meet their full CAPE accreditation by the October 1st, 2026 deadline.
But they would still, that company then would still come before this board, if that's correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And do we know how many companies exist that have applied by that past date of April 1st, 2024? Do we have an expectation of how many companies would wanna come and do business here?
There is one that I know of.
So there's just one company that actually could come before us?
There may be others, there's just the one that I know about.
It's only one that I know about either.
So is there some special connection for this company?
I can't answer that question.
They are a very good lobbying team.
I said the same thing under my breath.
Well, I'm saying it out loud, because I've talked to the lobbyists more than four, five times.
Yes, and I've gone to their list and checked to see the connection.
But I don't think the presumption or worrying about who is, could apply affects our adoption of this...
No, no, I'm just...
I'm not questioning, I'm not responding to you at all. I'm making a general comment to the board. We are adopting this criteria. That's all we're doing. We're not making any statement or projecting of anything that happened in the future. We're adopting a resolution that complies with what the legislature's already done. So we really are just complying with what the legislature has already told us we should do. That's all we're doing. Let's be clear about what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
And I agree with you. And in that same legislation, if they put any kind of provision for a follow-up to determine whether all of these potentially, a lot of teachers, I don't know how many, but when they all find out about it, maybe an easier route, we'll take that route. And that's not to diminish the expertise or the abilities of those individuals, but makes sense. It has human nature if you can get it done. Is there a way to follow up in terms of quality and what happens in the classroom ultimately? I know we, we actually have some of those with our College of Education follow-up, but do we have anything? Does legislation respond to that?
It does not, but we did add that they would have to report on the same indicators that our educated preparation program providers would have to provide. So we included that in the, in the law, but there's nothing in the legislation as far as quality.
In your professional opinion, is the accreditation from AQUEP equal or superior to CAPE?
I have not done enough research on AQUEP to answer that.
That was gonna be my next question. I know that CAPE at one point was NCAPE, and that has been accrediting it for 60 years for educated preparation programs. Now, AQUEP, is this a new entity or have, have they been around for a long time?
They've been around for a little while. But as far as the quality or their processes or anything like that, I cannot answer that question.
Can you bring us that information next time? I'd love to see the comparison of, of available.
And of how many, you know, states utilize AQUEP as far as institutions and how many utilize CAPE? Because as I said, NCAPE has been around, I know for years. I'm just not familiar with AQUEP.
Do you know how many use AQUEP originally?
Not off the top of my head. I know that it has not been around as long as, like you're saying, CAPE came because of the merger of NCAPE and those words, the two different crediting bodies in the United States that were largely recognized. It doesn't quite care the popularity that those do, and it has not had the longevity of even those organizations, but it is an accredited body recognized in the United States. And there are some states that have all of their programs almost that far through AQUEP. Alabama just chose to be a CAPE state, given that most of my institutions previously were NCAPE institutions.
But we'll definitely bring that information. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Let me define the timeline, back to Dr. Els, Mrs. Bell's questions. So all you are, or comments really, observations. You are, this is only changing the code. We're not, so you can approve the code. It does not mean you approve any organization. We would be announcing the intent to change the code at the September meeting. Then it would not be official, of course, you'd not vote on actually making the rule permanent. And I say no reason to do an emergency rule until November, at which time then we could notify this one company and any others that might be out there that they could apply under this provision. And I would think we would not bring you back anything before the first of the year. So maybe January or February, then you could, you know, bring them, just like you have other agencies here, and ask them questions and, and approve them or disapprove them. They would really, it's really only good for one year. Because when you look at, by the time the rule is in place and the, the applications are done and you approve or disapprove any company, the only potential is they would have the '25, '26 school year because it expires on October 1, 26. And so we would not start somebody for the '26, '27 school year that's, you know... So essentially, the way the legislation's written, it's a one-year window for this one company or others who may fall in that, that want to petition the board to be approved, to participate for one year. At the end of that one year, if they have not achieved CAPE accreditation, that's the one you just talked about hashtag teacher done, then that it would automatically just evaporate and go away. And the law goes away as well. This is part of the law. Just so you know, then we will have to come back in the fall of '26 and amend the administrative code again to take this back out.
So we're amending the code for one vendor?
We're gonna not directly answer that.
To clear that up for the public, we only know of one vendor.
That's right. Well, that was my question, how many?
I'm trying to...
We're amending the code in, in response to the change in the law.
We're amending the law to comply with legislation. That's the reason we're amending the code.
Any other discussion? We talked about item number six at the beginning, so we'll move forward with item seven and eight together.
Okay, so, yeah, seven and eight are gonna be fun. The National School Lunch Week is October 14th through the 18th. Hopefully you can all go by and speak to some cafeteria workers or eat in a lunchroom. I was able to go last year and visit cafeteria...
Can you guarantee some invitations?
Guarantee some invitations.
They can show up.
I can't guarantee them, but I will work on that. Yeah, I'll work on that.
Go see breakfast. If you really wanna have a good day, go see breakfast.
I like the roll.
I like the rolls, though.
So we'll work on it. It is, it falls during the week of the board meeting, and so with, that's the reason they're going, we're going to vote on it in September. Because if you don't vote on it until October, then actually there'll only be one day left of the week.
We'll go to a school for lunch, honey. Our vice president is going to get us invited to the next down brief from at school.
We can make that happen.
We can make it happen if y'all want to do that.
That'll be great.
Yeah, I love that.
Okay, we'll be working on that.
I just want the old time school pizza, I don't like, I like the old time school pizza. And these rolls and eggs are coming forward.
Okay, we're going to work on that.
Oh, that'd be fun, I love that one.
Tharktown Rocketry Team, this is not news to anybody. We've been very excited about Tharktown. Got to go up there and see Ms. McCray um and, and send them off to London. They did place, this is not, you know, breaking the bubble, they placed number two in the world at Hornsboro Air Show in London. And so they're back home now. But because they're beginning school this week, we decided to wait till next month to bring them down um for recognition. Great group of young people, and I got to spend some time with them. And if I took a poll in the room, I would bet the majority of, of the people in this room have never been to Tharktown. A few have though, and I have. It's a great little school um in Franklin County, and they're really, really proud of their, their rocketry team. And so anyway, we're going to bring them down here and do something special for them that day. And then the operating budget, if you'll take that and you'll look at it, I've talked to two or three of you about that, but I want to remain, I always, it confuses me, so, so everybody else is not confused, two budgets we talked about at this time of year. One of them's actually a budget request for the FY twenty-six foundation program. We will do that at the retreat and then at the September work session. This is the department's operational budget, which is based on what the legislature just passed to give us um and, of course, federal, with a, a lot of federal funds. The top you see there, um, twenty-eight, twenty-eight million dollars, five hundred fifty-five thousand. We do have some, some, obviously, if you look at the bottom, at our employees, we have employees that are also paid out of federal funds. I want to point out a couple of things, be glad to answering, well, be glad to try to answer questions. Dr. Payne is off on a conference now, so we've gone through it, gone through it, and gone through it. But you see, um, personnel costs went up, most of that is in the pay raise, two percent pay raise for employees. But I do want to point out rentals and leases is up quite a bit. Most of that is in this building, the lease on this building, the annual lease payments had not gone up since the twenty teens, and they went up this year. And so it's quite a, a, a bit, it's over a dollar a foot. Um, we, we rent hundreds, you know, feet by the hundreds of thousands, and so it was a very significant increase. Um, I will give the finance department that owns this building some credit. As you, you all know, the outside, they've done a remarkable job upgrading the building. They have replaced all the fire alarm system, the safety systems, uh, security systems, so it's, it's, it feels a lot better, a lot more secure than it did. Obviously, painting it makes it better.
Well, certainly fixed the air conditioning.
Yeah, they have fixed the air more than once. Um, the, um, the painting it is the thing that people notice. I've had so many people comment on that. But it's painted with a special coating that is not supposed to mildew like the old building did, so it's hopefully won't get like that again. We are also going through, as a part of this, our lease goes up because we're upgrading. So y'all know, y'all have been upstairs, the carpet was the same carpet we had when the building was built in the eighties. Um, the window, the, the window coverings, everything is the same as it was in the eighties. So we are upgrading all of our carpet, we are redoing all of our cubicle spaces with much better material that doesn't collect dust like the old material did, so we hopefully won't have as many breathing problems. Um, they've upgraded all the HVAC, and we are remodeling all the bathrooms. So, so that's all work that needs to be done, but you got to pay for that, so they went up on our lease. We also now are maintaining our own rental car fleet with Enterprise Rent-A-Car that, because the state did away with motor pool. And so we maintain a fleet of, I don't know, a few dozen cars all the time. And we're renting space to store those cars in the parking deck across the way here so that our employees who need to go on, um, you know, out, out of city trips or whatever, they can use one of those cars. We've always done that through the state motor pool. You remember when the governor, after her reelection, she did away with the state motor pool? And so each state agency had to, to create its own motor pool, and we did that through a contract with Enterprise. So instead of buying a bunch of cars and then having to maintain them, we, we rent them from Enterprise Rent-A-Car, and they maintain for us, and then we sublet them. And then a small portion of that, of course, is that we increased our footprint in Birmingham because you'll remember we had a part of that building, and then another company came in and they wanted to like encroach on space with us. It was empty space when we started, and I said, just go ahead and take the whole fourth floor so we're not sharing restrooms and sharing meeting space and all that with an outside agency. We don't know any of these people that are coming in. So we now have, that building, if you haven't, I know some of y'all haven't been there yet, it is really filling up. Um, there, there are days when you go up there, there are people everywhere because it has so much better parking and meeting space than this building. So a lot of our folks are starting to have meetings, have their meetings when they bring teachers in up there instead of Montgomery. Most of the state lives north of Montgomery, population-wise, no offense to Miss Seager, but it is a long way, though, if you're immobile to go up there. But then I also hear it's a long way to come here if you're in Jackson County, so we, um, so anyway, the big part of that increase is in this building because we're getting upgrades. Uh, go down, another one I wanted to point out is the grants and benefits is double. Though, that is because uh, we have a, we have a program called Unfund, well, it's not unfunded, Unmet Needs Fund. It's basically, it's the money we dipped into when the school burned down in Wilcox County, and we just had to write them a six hundred thousand dollar check the next day. So the legislature this year increased the fund of that. It doesn't mean it'll all be spent out, but I don't want you to think, oh, my gosh, we're going from five to ten, where are we going to get that other five from? So they increased it. Um, and part of that was because I did ask the budget chairs in the process to, to give us some funds for schools that we might have to take over if we find issues that, you know, once we take them over, they become our liability. And if there are things like the fire alarm system in Livingston that wasn't working, what we, as you know, we decided not to fix it, but to pay somebody instead. But if we had had to fix it, and the county doesn't have the money to fix it, when they're in state intervention, that two million dollars has to come out of the department's budget because they're in intervention. So I did ask them to help us find some money that we could use for intervention if needed, and that was where, um, I, I will have to, I'm going to give credit, Chairman Garrett and Chairman Orr were both very gracious with that and said, we don't want you to, to be trying to pinch pennies if you're going to have to take over a school district. But this was the best place for them to put that money too. So they, part of the reason they plus it up was for that also. And you see, we've had a few new employees, mostly because the office of mathematics improvement is growing, and it will continue to grow. And also, we created a position for Mr. Norris to do the after-school, summer school program. Don't, I want y'all to think, well, where is he paying for these? Well, because they transferred that grant program from DE Segey to us, so we will pay for it out of the grant funds. It's not a new expense that has to come out of our just general operating.
Any questions about the budget?
I do have, um, as we approach the budgets this year with the economy uh looking like, you know, you know, the forecast, yes, and watching it and watch the stock market and just all of those factors together, it's a, to use their words, volatile. And it really is, um, the unknown is so great at this point. In the next two years, I think we'll be a bit lucky just from seeing it, you know, it's cyclical. And so from the standpoint of our budgeting, I assume that that's part of what we will be requesting. It'll be based on, you know, that'll be a consideration. It'll be based on what we see, and we see the state offers not as abundant as they have been um in both months, actually. So I, I just think that's part of our responsibility as well. And I know everybody, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
But, but I assume that's the.
So we, we have seen the state's revenues are definitely slowing down. Uh, as you know, our, our revenues for the ETF primarily come out of the income tax and the sales tax. Sales tax have actually held up better than expected through the summer. We, at the end of July, we need about three, three hundred million dollars in revenue to meet the current year's budget. And, and so we're way ahead. So we think, we think we will actually end this year with close to a billion-dollar reserve as we go into October first. But to your point, we don't, the projection is that revenues will begin to continue to taper down. They did taper down. We actually had a negative month this year for the first time in like twenty-one months, I think it was May. But, but then the summer actually picked up. And so summer spending appears to be pretty much on track based on the things that we, you know, where the income, or, excuse me, the, the sales tax comes from. But it'll be interesting to see what happens to income tax next year. I'm very worried about that because if, um, you know, and I'm not predicting, so be careful, I know I'm on camera, I'm not predicting that there will be mass layoffs or something, but I'm watching the news like everybody else. And if there are layoffs, that obviously affects income tax. And income tax is our single biggest contributor to the state fund. By far, it's the single biggest contributor. And so, and that's corporate income tax and personal. So if we see corporate re, uh, revenue going down, um, then that's going to affect it too. So we are going to have to, I think, be very cautious and conservative in thinking. There's no, no question there's money um to finish out this budget year. There's actually, I wish this not on any of us, but if everything just stopped today and we didn't collect another penny from now till October first, there's enough money already collected this year to complete this year's budget. So that wouldn't be a problem. But as we start next year, we're going to have a little lower reserve than we had the last two years. And, you know, with the possibility that reserve would continue to, to drop. So we'll definitely have to talk about that. And I'll try to bring you some of those revenue sheets too when we meet again.
Any further discussion about the budget?
Well, Dr. Chestnut, my, the budget was my update. Really, I was going to talk about that because I know y'all want to discuss it at the retreat and then at the September work session. So you've asked the questions that I was going to try to cover. I really don't have other things other than I know the update on the retreat from Ms. Manning. We will, um, you know, be here for the September work session and then October. There's going to be a lot of stuff only October meeting and the September work session. So I know this one's a little, been a little shorter, but the next two months, I think, just pair one.
Dr. Mackey, I know that I appreciate so much Ms. Manning putting our cell phone discussion on our retreat, but do we have any information? I think I understood that we had a survey going out with our superintendents about the use of cell phones. I know in my district, I've had many changes, and I'm very, very pleased. Is there any?
Yes, so we are rescinding the survey now. We're letting folks get started with school, I think it's actually going out on Monday, to get you updated information for this upcoming year. I have talked to, well, one superintendent in particular whose answer is going to change, but it may not even be changed on the survey because his board's not going to vote on the change until later this month. But we think, whereas last year we had maybe a dozen, uh, maybe less than that, that we're restricting the use of cell phones during the day, it's, that number is growing dramatically. And we think that we're going to have a lot of districts that are acting on the board's resolution in the spring to ask them to go back and reconsider those policies. Well, they are, and many of them are now saying no cell phones during the day. They're going to be locked up, not just telling kids to turn them off, but locked up where they can't use them during the day. So I think we'll have fresh data for you to look at, at the retreat. And I have been asked by the media a lot in the last couple of weeks as we get ready to start school, whether the state board would ban the use of cell phones. And so I keep having to reiterate, state board doesn't have that authority. That's either the local boards do it, or the legislature would have to change the law. But the legislature back in the nineties passed a law saying local school boards are the only ones that have the authority to determine which electronic devices can be used in the classroom, which I'm a local control person, that's fine. But, but I don't want, you know, the state board's done what you can do and say to folks, you need to go back and relook at this based on the research coming out that shows that if kids don't have cell phones, discipline gets better, grades get better, attention gets better, everything good gets better, everything bad gets worse. So somebody mentioned me this week, they said, can you imagine when you were in school if they had allowed you to bring your TV to school? Of course, they were huge, so couldn't, I don't know how we did it. But if you could have brought your TV to school and brought your electronic games to school and brought your telephone, you know, and hooked it to the wall somehow, had all that on your desk and trying to learn, well, we could have. But that is what these are. You know, all of that is in one little device now, and I don't know how we'd think that fourteen-year-olds can pay attention in school when they've got all that at their access.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey, for that. And if you all get a chance to look at Coleman County Schools, Dr. Barnett, and I shared it on my Facebook page, was the teacher in the classroom, and he was going to talk about living things, I think. But everybody had a cell phone, he was doing something, so he called every child's attention to that. And, uh, but at the end, he gave the right kind of information so that his parents and his public would know, this is the way we have to do this. This, so it was great, so if you get a chance to look at that, do. But, uh, we have passed out the cleaned-up copy of the agenda for the board retreat. We will be staying at the fenial, and I know everybody that I think is coming has made their reservation. And, um, and we also will be having dinner that night down the street. So it should be a, a good night for us. We start out with the budget discussion. Then breakfast is provided by the hotel. So instead of having two meal expenses, we only have one, and they have given us a decent price for our stay there. District six legislators, and we have a couple in District six that are really gung-ho about doing some things. And so I thought it would be good if we could share some of our thinking with those legislators who are up and coming, and cell phones can be one of those. Policy or state policy, state law on that. And then we're also, Dr. Mackey's already mentioned some other things we're doing. And then we will leave the fenial and go down to Oxford City Schools, and they will feed us lunch, and they will, uh, they have a couple of places they want us to sit. The Calhoun County Culinary Program will provide, buy a break bar. So we're trying to, we're riding a bus from Oxford. We're having food that the culinary department has done. We're trying to get a real look at what school is doing in Calhoun County, and I think, I think you'll enjoy it. And we don't have everything listed on there that you might want to talk about, but we have a time limit there, so. And I've been told I have to be the time keeper, and I'm pretty sharp on time, so.
Do you know what time is check-in for the whole?
Check-in is at three.
Thank you.
Yes, check-in's at three. Any other questions about the retreat? If not, we want to thank everybody for attending our work session and for your commitment to education, our work session was a journey.
Launch upstairs, sir.